We call to order the committee of the whole meeting of Pottstown Borough Council for May 9, 2018. If you'll rise for your number of silence, followed by our pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to start with a slight change before we get to the subcommittee reports. I'm going to move items four, five, and six. These are presentations up to the front. So we'll start with number four, a presentation to retireee Gary L. Stotz.
All right, well, we're really glad to have Gary with us for the thirty-plus years that he served as the electrical and instrumentation technician for the borough. He finished out his career at the wastewater treatment plant, and, you know, he'll truly be missed by the people that worked for him or with him. He really played an instrumental role in the upgrade of programmable logic controls to modernize the water treatment plant operations and help improve efficiencies. You know, Gary's presence will really be missed at the water plant. And although he couldn't be here tonight, we just want to send our recognition to him and thank him for his honorable service to the borough.
Thank you. And thank you, Gary. Number five is another presentation. This is the Exceptional Employee of the Year for 2017, Laura E. Klein from our Utilities Department.
All right, we're proud to present Laura E. Klein as the Exceptional Employee of the Year. This was done through a voting process in which all the borough staff participated in to select the top candidate from each department. And then from those candidates, they were vetted out, and then a top candidate was selected overall. Ms. Klein began her career with the borough in 2016. According to her peers, she is very helpful at all times and a great team player. She's a very dependable and valuable employee of the wastewater treatment plant. She will take overtime if no one else signs up for it, just to be sure that plant operations are covered and to avoid others being mandated. Her knowledge of plant operations has been an asset to her troubleshooting ability. She's respectful of her coworkers. She takes additional classes to uphold her wastewater license. She's responsible and accountable for her actions, and she ensures that the wastewater is being treated efficiently and within the discharge limits. All around, Laura's a really great employee for us. She's a great team player. She goes above and beyond, and we just want to thank her for that by this recognition.
Excuse me.
So Laura, if you could please come up, we'd like to present you with this award.
For 2017, the Police Officer of the Year, Detective Michael Glounert. Chief?
Mary, would you like to add, please? Mike, you want to bring yourself? Yeah. Yeah, it did come up. [laughter]
I would like to present this commendation for Police Officer of the Year for 2017 to Detective Michael Glounert. He became a police officer in the borough of Pottstown on June 29, 2009. He was in the Patrol Division from 2009 to 2015. In January 2015, he was moved into the Detective Division as a rotating detective. He embraced his opportunity in detectives and was permanently assigned to detectives in January 2016. Over the course of his three years in detectives, he has become an extremely valuable asset to the Pottstown Police Department. In 2017, his career flourished. He became the go-to guy for the borough's camera system, downloading video surveillance and downloading phones. He's extremely unselfish and is always willing to help other officers and departments with investigations. In 2017, he handled a high-profile robbery case. The victim was robbed at gunpoint in the area of High and Kyne Streets while leaving for work. He worked the case, obtaining video from area establishments and reaching out to other police departments with similar robberies. He and Detective CJ Leeds from Norristown PD determined that the suspect was committing robberies in Pottstown and Norristown. After a lengthy investigation, an arrest was made, and the case went to trial. After a jury trial, the suspect was found guilty of the robberies and sentenced to thirty to sixty years in state prison. This case was only a small example of his dedication and loyalty to the Pottstown Police Department and the residents of the borough of Pottstown. He's a pleasure to work with. He's at work half hour early every day and takes on any task without a complaint. He's self-motivated and regularly volunteers for complicated and daunting tasks. His integrity, credibility, hard work, and dedication make him worthy of Police Officer of the Year.
Infrastructure. Vice President Colton.
Okay, well, we'll start with Public Works. We're finishing up a lot of last year's paving, Oke Street, Franklin. They've done Potts Drive, Prospect, and the new dryer for the, down at the water plant, sewer plant, has been approved. There's also a scrambler for odors. They're enlarging the Kyne Street, the industrial highway at Kyne Street. And, let me see, LNI, they're on their second cycle of, lost my train of thought here. That's it, rentals. And they're getting a lot of good back taxes back that have been in back pay. Parks and Rec, the nature play is finished down at the park. They had a day, it was a Saturday, where they had several families participate in painting of the new nature park. And Phase Three in the fall, they'll have new playground parks coming in and equipment. And the ballpark's doing good with all their baseball. Pollock Park, they're doing more testing, and that's about all that's going on with that for right now. And they're dismantling the old Reading Pike Bridge in some point in the near future. Don't know when that's going to be, but I think that's about it.
Very good, thank you. B is Economic Development and Business Liaison. Our paid executive director, Peggy V. Clark.
So many of you have heard about the QOZs. The QOZs, to remind you, are Qualified Opportunity Zones. They are a vehicle that were created through the federal tax bill in the fall that passed through legislation. And as part of that, governors were permitted to nominate census tracts that met certain recommendations to be considered for Qualified Opportunity Zones. It was incumbent upon boroughs and towns across Pennsylvania to put their request into DCED, which those recommendations then were put through to the governor. And Pottstown has been successful in acquiring three of those census tracts. So we have Qualified Opportunity Zones. These are the maps up here that I wanted you to see. The Qualified Opportunity Zone now is in the hands of the Federal Treasury Department. They will make the final determination, and then, as often is the case, they pass the policy and then they figure out how it's all going to work. So the federal government will figure out, and then we will get guidance as to how we will make this attractive program. But the idea of it is that communities will get investments from businesses, other businesses that will invest into a fund in a community that can either be real estate or a business. And from that, their relief will be on their capital gains. They will have to be invested in a community fund for X amount of years to be able to get that relief, but it is an attractive program for those that would be otherwise hit significantly on the assets that they sell. So I just wanted to give you, we've talked about the QOZs before, but I wanted to show you the tracts. We did nominate all three. The first one that we chose was the one that runs along Keystone Boulevard, and that was particularly attractive to us because at the same time, we have the KEEP project, which you all received a presentation on. The next part was the one that had, and so that is what you're looking at. It goes all the way up to the municipal airport. I know it's hard to see, as well as Circle of Progress will be included in that. And then if you could go to the next slide, please. You will see that this census tract, 208.89.04, they have part of High Street. So I don't know who decided on the maps for the census tract, but they split our main street right in half. So we had to choose. We had to split the baby. And so we put a recommendation in that we would pick everything from High Street and then south for, towards Industrial Boulevard. But we did make a case for the fact that High Street is our main thoroughfare through the downtown, and that we really would, it would put us at a disadvantage if one was approved and not the other. So we won the case, and the next slide, if you show, is the other side of High Street. So both sides of High Street and north and south of High are included in this census tract. It is a big deal because there were many, many, many applications, but there was only a small percentage that could be approved within the Commonwealth, so governors could only put a few through. So we've gotten a major hurdle, and I look forward to coming back and getting word to you once the Federal Treasury makes its determination, which I'm hoping will be by the end of May. They're saying May 15th or 16th, but I always prefer to give them a buffer. So hopefully by the end of May, we'll know something.
Good.
And that's my report. Thank you.
Okay, C is Transportation. Vice President Colton.
No meeting.
No meeting. Oliver, Poisoned Rules, with Counselor Kirkland.
There's a new director. I will be meeting with him this month, and I should have a summer report for next month.
Okay. Ms. Penrod.
I am Art Green with a pony. Here with your official monthly update on the Pottstown Regional Public Library. Starting off this month, I'll focus on the Youth Department, number one, four items. Number one, the Community Room on the lower level has received a new hard surface, more durable flooring finish. The walls will be repainted very shortly, and essentially it's, voila, a new room at, like, no cost, thanks to the stewardship of the library staff of that wonderful building. Number two, the new room in the lower level, the Maker Space, which I mentioned last month, will be opening very shortly for kids to learn hands-on science, technology, engineering, and math skills, STEM. It will be opening within the month and will eventually allow hands-on learning for 3D printing, robotics, and other cool stuff. The school district faculty and staff are all invited to an open house in the Maker Space in the near future, so council members with constituents who work for the school district may expect to hear some increased interest in the library. And there will also be a public introduction or grand opening at some point later on in the summer. Number three, summer reading program, the theme of Libraries Rock and Show on the Road, partnering with Parks and Recreation. There will be a live reptile show at Riverfront Park in July. And the other three supporting municipalities, West Upper Lower Groves, will also partnering through their Parks and Rec, and Pottstown Borough residents are all invited to those shared programs. And number four, through the Pottstown School District, three hundred and ninety, three hundred and ninety kindergarten kids at our four elementary schools are participating in a raising reading program where they will be receiving applications for getting their own library cards. So thank you for the borough and to our private and company sponsors for their support of this critical local institution.
Very good. Thank you. Pottstown School District. Ad hoc zoning, Counselor Praskle. No meeting. Animal Committee, Counselor Kirkland.
Nothing.
Nothing? Safety, Chief Drumhiller.
Nothing.
Emergency Services Reports.
For the month of April, Goodwill Fire Company ran fifty-nine emergency calls. During the month of April, we also did two different training sessions. On the tenth, we did some driver operator training with our squad. On the twenty-fourth, we did an extremity trauma training, which was an EMS training put on by Lehigh Valley Cedar Crest Trauma Center doctors. Prevention and safety during the month. On the fourth, we did a fire safety presentation in our station. On the thirteenth, we went to Jefferson School Apartments and did a presentation for the residents there. On the twenty-first, we attended the Peak Community Event at the high school. And on the thirtieth, we did a fire safety presentation for the employees at the YMCA. Fundraising for the month, we did two Fire Academy launches at Montgomery County Fire Academy on April 28th and 29th. And during this month, just an interesting note, all three of our apparatus were inspected. Everything passed. Everything's good for another year. And some upcoming events, we have our Mother's Day Flower Sale, which will be starting late Friday afternoon and going until we run out, hopefully sometime Sunday morning. And our Memorial Day Breakfast will be held at the station from 7:30 to 10:00 before the Memorial Day Parade, and we'll also be opening up the station to the veterans should it rain that day and they need to have their event inside. They'll come down and use our station. Thank you.
Once again, good evening, Council. The Phillies, our monthly report. Training this month covered, they had fourteen and a half man-hours of training. It doesn't include the juniors and everything that are going through a MOD 3 class, which I'll mention. We did sixty fire calls and to a total of about fifty point two man-hours of service. The training is all-inclusive as far as fire ground operations, things of that nature. So there's a lot of repetitive stuff that goes on week after week. Fundraising, we had to postpone our scheduled 5K run in June because it's, we didn't want to compete with the Relay for Life. We figured that was going to hurt us more than it was going to hurt them. So that'll be a new date, that'll be announced. We have a fundraiser coming up, a cigar social, coming up May 19th. Anyone that's interested, please contact myself or the station, or Charlie Pierce, if you know Charlie, most of you do. And then also, our big event coming up is our annual golf tournament on Saturday the nineteenth, or sorry, Saturday, August 18th at Arrowhead. Anyone interested, again, please give me, you know, contact myself, Charlie, or the station, and we need foursomes and sponsors, anybody that's out there wants to do a sponsorship. The juniors and the explorers this month are continuing to work, again, co-training with the senior members at various, excuse me, various training events, and they're also, some of them are doing the MOD 3, is that correct, Kevin, MOD 3? MOD 3 classes down at the Goodwill Station, and I understand they're working pretty hard. For the community, the members of the Phillies helped out on Saturday, April 28th, down at the park in the park, at Memorial Park. We had Engine Four down there on display.
Very good.
Also, just to, that I don't have on here, is that we just took receipt of a $15,000 grant that we put in for, and we're going to be replacing both bay doors on the front of the building. So that'll be happening within the next month. Hopefully next month, I'll have a couple of pictures for you.
Good.
Thank you.
Chief?
I've got a presentation later. We'll talk about that.
Okay. Thank you. Human Relations. Ms. Levigood.
Good evening, Councilors. The Commission's April meeting was held on Tuesday, April the 10th, 2018, in Council Chambers. The Commission is working on recruiting candidates for future commissioners, and the Commission continues to work on the Community Day Event to be held on Sunday, June the 10th, 2018, from 12 noon to 5 o'clock on the 100 block of High Street. May is Asian Pacific American and Jewish American Heritage Month. We recognize the achievements the Asian Pacific and Jewish people have contributed to America and our American culture. Thank you.
Thank you. Ad hoc financial sustainability, the Oversight Committee, Counselor Kirkland.
Yeah, I have full-time employment now, so I was not able to attend the last meeting. I have arranged with Yanis for a new date and time for meetings going forward.
Okay.
And I will be able to attend the future meetings. But if you have anything to say from the last meeting?
The only thing I want to add from the last meeting is we're getting very close to getting information from the IP as far as moving forward, and we're hoping to have that in hand before the next meeting. Sum it up?
Yes.
Okay.
Also, I think we're going to, for our next foreseeable meetings, we're going to start trying to implement some of these great ideas that we have, that we've had before.
Right.
So some implementation needs to start taking place.
Very good. Okay. Okay, jumping to seven, the Mayor's Report. Mayor Henry.
Okay, there was a lot going on this month. I volunteered with other members of our Rotary Club with Habitat for Humanity on a renovation they're doing on the 400 block of Walnut Street. I put up, helped to put up a drop ceiling and a wall, which is pretty amazing, considering I am not a handy person, and they let me use a table saw. So I still have all ten fingers and was able to cut something straight. We had our DNC meeting. Don't forget to vote for the primaries. These are extremely important elections this year. Primary is Tuesday, May 15th. Put it in your calendar, go vote. I was interviewed by NBC regarding our opposition to the closing of the YMCA and discussed the detrimental impact that this is going to have on our community. I met with James Rullier, the owner of Fly Elite at our airport, and I took a tour and discussed possible additions. If you haven't been out to the Pottstown Airport, it's very cool. You can rent U-Hauls there. They have hot air balloon rides. They also have flying lessons and aerial tours, and there's a great view of Pottstown up there. So go check it out. I also attended Bark for Life and spoke about losing my mother. We had a presentation by the CEO of Aklamo. The CEO is Nellie Jimenez-Aravalo, and she presented on the educational programs and social services and health access that Aklamo provides to the Latino communities, and how Aklamo empowers these individuals to succeed and become productive members in society. We also had our climate march and rally, which I attended and marched. We had our Congressional Candidate Forum that was sponsored by Power. Of course, we had our goat races this weekend. Congratulations to Princess Jenny, and thank you to Sly Fox. The Princess Jenny Maibach was pretty tasty. I met with the Honorable Greg Scott, who's a district justice in Norristown regarding programs available for some of his defendants and possibly other individuals in the Montgomery County community. We had our Pension Board Committee meetings today, and it is also Public Service Recognition Week. And in honor of the millions of public employees at the federal, state, county, and local levels, I have issued a proclamation. Upcoming events this week, Friday, May 11th, is the Montgomery County Senior Games, where I will be a vendor, and that's the Montgomery County Community College in Blue Bell. Saturday, May 12th, is Get Out the Vote. You're going to see lots of people going around this weekend, dropping off lit and knocking on doors. Be nice, please. And so you'll get a lot of information for the primaries. Also, on Saturday, May 12th, we have our first annual Eco Fest, which is at Smith Family Plaza from 12 to 4, I believe. There's going to be a lot of vendors and a lot of good food to eat. And of course, Sunday is Mother's Day, so please remember to honor your mothers, whether they are with us or not. And that's all I have.
I do. Manager, this report.
All right, I'd like to take a few minutes to update everyone on the status of some of our grants and other projects that we have going on throughout town. We, last month, I believe, we submitted a CDBG grant for a downtown LED lighting upgrade project. That project will look at upgrading about sixty-five lights, including the Victorian lights, some of the parking lot lights, and then some of the above-head Cobra head lights within the 200 and 300 blocks of High Street. So the idea is that we'll not only net energy savings over the long run from that project, but also greatly improve the visibility downtown, which will hopefully aid in the safety of that area as well. Just an update on the King Street Bridge. If you recall, we had TPD, who is the engineer that's working on this project, for Penn dot come in and present some options as far as some of the aesthetic treatments that could be incorporated on the bridge. If you recall, the council was very much in favor of a treatment similar to that that we have on High Street Bridge right now over the Manatoni Creek. The engineer had some concerns because of the hydrology problems that a totally closed wall presents in that situation. So what they've come back with, I think, is a pretty happy medium. What they're proposing is about a one and a half foot tall What they're proposing is about a one and a half foot tall wall. That would be a concrete form liner wall with a brick pattern on it. And then there would be a double black railing on the top of it. So the thought was is that by keeping it a low wall with a railing, it would improve the hydrology in that area. It also helps out with some of the turning movements that get somewhat difficult as you're turning on King to Manatoni Street. So having that lower wall certainly helps in that regard. And their main reasoning for the brick, number one, was that they felt that by having a lower wall, if you try to put a full rock pattern on it, it just, the pattern just isn't going to show up like you would want it to. But by having bricks as a pattern, it's a smaller unit, and it'll probably look better aesthetically, where you could get four or five courses of brick before you would get the top cap on the wall. The other part to that was that they felt that King Street kind of being the entry, and the King Street Bridge being the entry to our historic district, a brick material may be more appropriate in that area to kind of match the aesthetics of the neighborhood. And we're still working with them on getting some sort of lighting put into that bridge that hasn't been confirmed yet. But unless there's any major objections to the aesthetic treatments that I've described, they're going to move forward with the brick form liner wall option. And we'll work with them to see if there could be any, you know, decorative columns or anything like that put on it, just to kind of enhance the structure a little bit more. We have also submitted a grant, a T C D I planning and zoning grant that would cover a planning study, a very small planning study along Chime Street. So getting ready for the bridge to be reconstructed in two thousand and twenty. That's, yeah, that's it, two thousand and twenty, that's what we're being told, so it's not us, it's the county. We want that area to be positioned, well-positioned for future growth. And since that will be serving as our new gateway, or reestablish gateway into town, we want to look at a zoning overlay in that area that would allow the existing, you know, industrial businesses to stay. But perhaps an overlay zone could be created along the frontage of Chime Street that would allow some more business-serving types of uses to go in, in the vacant parking lot areas in front of the Pottstown Industrial Complex, and then also the area near Pollock Scrapyard. So I've been working with both the business owners in that area. They're supportive of that concept. You know, let's face it, manufacturing has changed. That parking lot is never going to be full again with automation. We need to find higher and better uses for that area, rather than letting it kind of be a detraction for what we're trying to accomplish here in town. Couple paving updates. We're, there's still a couple of areas that are unfinished. We're hoping to get out, back out next week to finalize the three point five blocks that we have still to pave under the borough's contract. There's also a separate contract for Manatoni Street that Penn Dot is undergoing right now. They have Manatoni Street milled at this point, from the Borough Line, from the South Borough Line to the North Borough Line. And they're actually expecting to come back in Monday night and start paving. So be alert in that area as well. An update on the walk bike project. York and Johnson Street are slated to be changed to one way the week of May twenty first. We have been coordinating with the police, they're going to get a message trailer set up in that area. So stay tuned, if you're passing by the area, for the exact dates of when that closure will go into effect. I think we've mentioned all the great events that were going on here in the past and this weekend. We also just want to mention that we have the Memorial Day Parade going on on Memorial Day, so look for that as well. We're working through with Ellen I and J P Mascaro to set up an e-waste recycling event. So tentatively, we've scheduled this for ten A M to one P M on Saturday, June sixteenth. We're still working out all the details of that, but essentially, you would be able to bring most electronic items and dispose of them free of charge. There probably will be a charge for disposing TVs. We're still trying to work out exactly what that will be. So look for more information on that to come soon. One, couple last announcements. If you recall, council did move to appoint our fire chief, Wes Sar, as the emergency management coordinator. We did get word that Governor Wolf did ratify that motion. So he is our new emergency management coordinator. Congratulations, Mike. April is National Safe Digging Month, so call before you dig. And lastly, I just want to congratulate Councilor Arms on his marriage. I wish you a happy and healthy life together.
Question, the King Street, the concept, could we get a sketch of that?
Yeah, I can send out, they actually have another bridge that they did in Philadelphia that's very similar, so I'd be happy to send that out to everyone.
Very good. Okay, nine is a presentation about the May twelfth, two thousand and eighteen Vegan Fest update. Mr. Sharon? And Ms. Merzer?
I'm not going to bore you. When I came up with this idea two years ago, Caitlin, I figured we're going to have like twenty-five vendors dealing with the ecology and vegan foods. Well, it has exploded to probably almost fifty vendors. And most of those vendors, maybe one or two exceptions, have never been to Pottstown before. And they're coming from the greater Philadelphia area, looking forward to it. If it's okay, I'm going to have Caitlin give each of yous a map. She has laid the map out for our, down to the inch, and gives you an idea of the scope of vendors we have. We're going to have a lot of vendors showing how to help the environment. Vegan foods, I grew up on Kabasi and Huluki, but it's okay, you know, to try. It's okay, you know, want to try different foods, there are going to be animal rescues there. My priest is going to be in the front blessing animals, or people that want their pets blessed. He's going to be blessing them. And we've made this like sort of a coordinated effort with Sheila. We're working with Padita closely on this, about bringing people in. And I'm excited, because all the businesses that are coming have never been here before. I think one or two have. And it's going to showcase our town. And some of the folks that are on the board have never been in Pottstown before. And it was like an experience for them to see some of the stores and what's happening in Pottstown. And I'm going to let Caitlin talk a little bit about some of the vendors.
Yeah, he's talking about our reach. We do have, we've reached all the way to Philadelphia and Westchester and King of Prussian in between, people have been coming. We have a lot of nonprofits coming, like Penn Environment and Peace Advocacy Network and Liberation Philadelphia, Penn Future, Montgomery County Green Party, United Poultry Concerns, Sea Shepherd, Green Mountain Energy. All these places are, they're not used to being in this area for events. So they're all going to have different things for information and stuff. But some of the fun stuff we'll have is, like, Pottstown Community Arts will be doing crafts for the kids for Mother's Day. And everything will be eco-friendly. And we'll also have Kiwanis International, who's usually, the chapter's usually in Collegeville. So that's their first time here. And they'll be doing face painting. And then we'll have some really good food. We'll have I Create and Planty from Pottstown. And then Tornetta's Pizza. I approached them because of this event, because we don't have any vegan pizza in this town, and that's a really easy thing to do, with some of the new cheeses. And when I told him about it, he went to Giant, tried out some of the cheeses I told him about, and now he's ordered new menus that include a vegan pizza. And I'm going to be able to have them on Happy Cow, which is, I'm not sure if you're familiar with that. That's what vegetarian and vegan people do a search when you're going through an area. And you're like, oh, there's a restaurant I can stop at. So now I'll be able to get Tornetta's on there, because they did that, and even put it on their front sign. And we'll have Gangster Vegan and Greyhound Cafe and Eat Nice. They'll be serving fried raviolis, those sound really good. And Sand Island Ice, we'll be serving shaved ice, we'll have good desserts. And then we also have Bridge Street Chocolates coming from Phoenixville. And that Gangster Vegan's from Phoenixville as well. And the Community Eco Store from Phoenixville is coming. And we have, we also have Santos Organic Farms is going to be selling some flowers, that'll be good for Mother's Day. And the chocolates are definitely good for Mother's Day. So we kind of have a theme of shop for mom while honoring Mother Earth. And then we also, everything's going to be completely recyclable on site, because we're going to have both recycling and compost. And then we have, Peace Advocacy Network is collecting some things that aren't usually recyclable, like little candy wrappers and things like that, things that'll be in some of our sample bags. So we'll be really pushing a lot of education on what you can recycle and what you can compost when you're there. And we'll also have live music, which I'm a musician, I will be playing, I should have said that earlier. And we have a great speaker, Christina Perrello. She actually won an Emmy for her show Christina Cooks. And she's a cancer survivor. And she's been healthy for years, doing like a whole food diet, and she's supposed to be a really inspirational speaker. And we also have a vegan bodybuilder slash organic farmer, Angel Santos, is going to be speaking. And our musicians are Rick Danzian and Julia Othmer, who's coming all the way from L.A., and then myself, and I sing and play bass. So I think those are the highlights. It should be really fun. And I've been, everywhere we go, people are like, oh, yeah, I heard about that. So there seems to be quite a buzz, even before we started doing our promotions for it. So it seems to be quite a new thing for Pottstown, so the word kind of spread fast.
Just very quickly, the cooperation of this group of volunteers who have worked with us and Bill has been great. And I want to put it out there to all the people that keep saying, why don't we have more events? Well, we need more people like this to help step up. And it's been a great event, it's been a pleasure working with these guys. And although I have to work my other job on Saturday, I may not be there the whole time, but I hope everybody else will be that can be, because they've really worked really hard, and we appreciate their efforts to bring things and bring people out of town into town. So thank you to all of you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay. We move to number ten, the Hannover Square Warehouse, three hundred Cherry Street, conditional use.
Sure, council remembers last month, we had a hearing at the committee, the whole meeting involving Hannover Square, specifically the property of three hundred Cherry Street. The request was conditional use to allow residents on the first floor of the Sherp Factory Building, and also to permit two twin homes to be constructed on the project. Under the law, you have forty-five days to provide your decision. At this point, Monday night would be the last regular meeting you would have to make a timely decision. I have circulated to council a proposed order with several conditions. Because you're serving in a judicial capacity, if you'd like to, you have the right to discuss this in executive session, but certainly you will need some type of action Monday night on this conditional use request. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
If there are no questions now, we'll list this for Monday. Eleven, Conic Subdivision.
The Conic Subdivision is a minor subdivision at the corner, I believe, of North Hannover Street and Wilson. Essentially, there are no improvements being sought at this time. Essentially, all that's happening is there is an existing office building, there is an existing residence, all on the same parcel. The owner wishes to draw a line down the property, so that there would be two separate parcels. One would contain the office, and one would contain the existing house. Obviously, in the future, be able to sell the separate parcels and the separate structures. This was before the Planning Commission at the last Planning Commission meeting. I think you have quite a bit of information in your packet with respect to both our engineer letter, the waiver request letter of the applicant, and the county planning commission review letter. I don't think there's anything really complicated about this. The only real issue that the Planning Commission discussed in some detail, and I'll defer to Dan and to Dennis, but there is a patio that's kind of a common element between the two lots. And the way it's structured, I think they want the patio to go with the residential parcel. So there would be the need for an easement agreement to make sure the use of the patio goes with the house. And I had suggested that in addition to the easement agreement, we note in the deeds that this issue exists, so there's no future dispute between the property owners. Right now, at the present time, I understand that both tenants that have been in the properties get along very well, and potentially, they may ultimately acquire the lots when they're created. But in the future, we don't know who's going to be the owner, and we want to make sure that they understand what the rules are with respect to this patio, since it is kind of in the middle of the lot, so to speak. So I'm happy to answer any questions. I'll let Dennis and Dan chime in. Planning Commission did make a favorable recommendation, and I believe they also recommended the waivers.
Mm-hmm, we did. Anything to add, Dennis?
No, I can agree with what you said, Mr. Garner. Planning Commission's concern was what to do with this patio. And whether we like it or not, it meets all the requirements, and it's been approved. So if there's no further questions or comments, I'll list this for movement on Monday night.
And we'll have a suggested motion on your agenda with conditions, and specifically list all the waivers that were discussed. I think the applicants here tonight, or the applicants' engineers here, if you have any questions. But if there's any additional information, it needs to be provided unless you do have questions.
Okay. Twelve, Greater Pottstown Tennis and Learning at Maple Street Park. The agreement is in your packet.
I can take that. So if you recall, Greater Pottstown Tennis and Learning had come in to present to council a significant upgrade that they would like to make happen at Maple Street Park. They are affiliated with the United States Tennis Association, a nonprofit community organization dedicated to improving the lives of youths from broad social, economic, cultural backgrounds, with programs based on the ideals of tennis legend Arthur Ashe. So essentially, we're formalizing the agreement to propose allowing them to upgrade the existing tennis courts. So that would be upgrades of two of the existing courts and construction of one new court. This agreement will also cover the installation of a roughly two thousand square foot modular building and a storage shed. The agreement does not include any type of all-weather facilities. Although the agreement acknowledges it, it does not permit for those types of facilities to be installed at this juncture, but it does concede that that could be a possibility in the future. They have non-exclusive rights to operate the facility under this agreement, and it must be open to the public eighty-four hours per month. They also may not charge Pottstown youth for lessons. And some of the activities that they would put on there would require park and recreation approval and/or reimbursement for borough services. You know, some of the borough services, if they were to have a large event or something like that, that would create the necessity to pick out, pick up trash or something like that, that would be out of our regular trash cycle, we would want to be able to charge them for that to recoup our fees for that service. Greater Pottstown Tennis and Learning would be responsible for maintenance of the courts, as well as all utility connections. And one of the things that I would recommend to council before we would finalize the plans, is that some language be incorporated into the agreement, that they come back to present to council what, exactly what the final plans are before they would move forward with construction.
Any questions?
I think it's a great idea, but this, one mission.
They have to remove a couple of very old sickwood trees?
Yeah, there is. Yeah, um, there, there is at least one, um, fairly large sycamore that would be removed as a part of the construction of the new tennis court.
I think they're replanting, you know, part of the, the court.
Yeah, that's, that's correct. You know, we did bring that up to them and they did, they did agree to a, in concept to a certain number of replacement trees for that. I'm not sure of the exact quantity.
How about we talk about the replacement of two and the removal of one?
Okay. But again, I think that's something, if they're coming back with the plan, we can look at it and get a full understanding of exactly the extent of what they're proposing there, um, you know, and, and try to work with them, uh, on, on any other improvements that we may see necessary as a part of approving the plan.
Yes, if you're comfortable with the, uh, content of the agreement, you could move forward with conditional approval subject to final review of, uh, Mr. Lenhart, the manager in our office, so.
What the additional language that you're suggesting to propose?
Yes, I, I think that's, I think that's very important.
Yeah, I mean, ultimately, it's, it's, it's the borough's park and, um, anything that we do there, we, we want to bring it back to, to council so that they can run it by their constituents and get their feedback.
Okay, then we'll list it for Monday. Thirteen, there's a resolution, uh, the Part Local Match.
Right, so this is an annual, uh, resolution that we do every year. If, if you recall, Part is federally funded. Uh, the match for that, the federal funds come from the local level. In this case, Chester County and Montgomery County pay 100% of the match. Uh, the borough does not pay any match towards Part. So, um, this would be a resolution to confirm that, the commitment to the match.
Very good. No questions, we'll list that. Fourteen, TCDI Grant Application.
Right, so this is the application that I spoke about earlier, which would involve zoning and planning work along Kyne Street. Uh, we worked with, uh, Montgomery County under, under our planning contract with them to vet, um, three different projects. They ultimately recommended this as the project to pursue because this particular funding source puts a very high ranking on, um, projects that interface with land use and transportation. So with the, with the bridge coming in down there, um, they felt that this would have a good, a good shot at possibly receiving an award. So, the resolution is, um, there for that. The, uh, match for that grant is $8,000, I believe.
Okay. All right, we'll list that. Fifteen, Hill School. Uh, they need to close Beach Street on May 26th from 9 until 1. That's for their ceremony.
Yeah, so this is for the Hill School to conduct their graduation, um, ceremony that day. Um, this, uh, application has been reviewed by the police department.
Questions, discussion?
I mean, I think it's ridiculous that they need to close an entire street for four hours, uh, when the high school has their graduation and closing down the streets. We bend over backwards for them. Just my comments, I mean, it's got to go through anyway, but...
Okay. Any other comment? Okay, we'll list this for action on Monday. Sixteen, Go Fourth Festival, July 4th, 2018, requesting a beer garden.
Yeah, so they would like to, um, uh, install a beer garden, um, at the event and, um, per our ordinances, they would need council approval to do so. Um, I think we've, uh, approved this in the past for similar events.
Many of them. Okay, we'll list that for Monday evening. Seventeen, Fire Code and Building Code Regulations. Do you want that, or?
Good evening. So, I'm, I'm coming to you because I want to propose some changes to the fire code, to strengthen our fire code, um, because it might seem overwhelming. I've created a PowerPoint to hopefully guide you and allow you to ask questions later So, the one thing I want to point out, that our current building codes approved by the state, they only provide the bare minimum for life safety. That's why municipalities across the state provide these amendments to strengthen their fire codes, to get above the state minimum. And that's all we're asking for here, is to go above the state minimum. So, we're looking at four major areas where we want to make changes. The first one is called a certificate of fitness and I'll go into that a little bit more. Really, we're trying to do is verify that the providers that are, are working on our systems here have the training, education, and certification to do such. Um, we're also looking to add a fire protection maintenance reporting system, uh, which is third-party, third-party, it's cloud-based and there's zero-dollar costs to the borough. Uh, the next thing is, we're going to strengthen our fire alarms. Um, we want to go to a listed central station, have listed fire alarm providers, and, uh, some new systems require complete coverage of fire alarm systems instead of just a pull station. Basically, we want to become automatic instead of manual. And then we're going to propose, uh, some new changes for some sprinkler systems. We're going to add some, add a requirement for B use, which is business, and we want to, uh, increase the, um, or rather reduce the, the square footage for sprinkler systems because right now in the current building code and the fire code, it says if the building is 12,000 square feet, they have to put a sprinkler in it. A lot of businesses don't like to do that, so they build them to 11,000 square feet. We're looking to change that for, to 10,000 square feet. And the thing that's, that's important to remember is this is not to go after anything that's currently built. This is only for new construction or if it's a change of use. A change of use would be something that goes from a business use to an assembly, such as going from selling, or rather a dentist office to turning it into a bar. That's a change of use. There are higher requirements for assembly uses over a dentist office or a doctor's office. So the certificate of fitness is basically, we're trying to make sure that all our providers are registered with the borough. We already have an ordinance that all contractors have to be registered with the borough. We have another ordinance that says fire alarm, uh, installers and businesses and homes that have fire alarms have to register with the borough. Um, since I've been here, uh, I'm unable to find that that part of the ordinance has been enforced. I'm looking to continue that enforcement or, or begin enforcing that, but I want to add others, such as sprinkler contractors, um, alternative suppression systems, such as you may have heard of like a Halon system or the Kitchen or the Ansel systems, uh, fire extinguisher installers, pyrotechnics, the, the fireworks people, uh, hood and duct installers, as well as those that are going to blow things up. So, already under the code, we're required to receive annual reports when a contractor comes out and inspects a fire alarm system, a sprinkler system, and others, others like that. Most of the copies that we get are handwritten, they're difficult to read, they're arriving months later, sometimes we have to ask for them. So we're switching to, we'd like to switch to a new software. It's called, uh, the Compliance Engine. And it's a, it's completely electronic. The installer and the maintenance people have an app on their phone or their tablet where they enter the information. It's cloud-based, we get instant access. Already across the United States, there's 200 municipalities that are using it, 18 in Pennsylvania. Us and Bethlehem are now on the, on the block to potentially, uh, employ this. Of that, there's already 184 fire protection companies in Pennsylvania that use this system. So it's not a new system to them, this is already something that they're already using and they're familiar with. So, the purpose of the fire alarm system is to provide early notification. In my line of work, early notification and early suppression is critical to saving a business and a home. I can't really make you put sprinklers in a home, the state has fixed that so that I can't even ask you for that, but for businesses, I want to protect the businesses, I need to get notified if there's a fire earlier. So, this was found on an apartment building where it says, "Due to a recent weather event, our fire system doesn't, doesn't work. If you hear it, you have to call 911." Well, that's a system impairment. The system is broken. Okay? Under our current requirements, we would have to find that. The alarm companies and the businesses are under no obligation to tell us, "Hey, my alarm system is broke." So we want to go and require a central station, which is the higher level of protection, that if the system doesn't work after eight hours, the alarm company is calling me or the fire code official to say, "Hey, just so you know, this system isn't working." And if it's truly broken, they have four hours to begin repairs for it. So that's why we're, we're actually seeking the higher level of, of monitoring. With that, you have to get listed fire alarm companies. So to get listed, they have to be listed by a national research and testing laboratory, such as Underwriters Laboratory, Intertek, or FM Global. Those are the three largest, I'm sure there's others out there. Um, and annually, these companies get evaluated that the work that they're doing meets the intent of the code. The way that they handle the alarms is following the code. And because of the four-hour time limit, there is also another two-hour time limit, it's called runner service. They're going to tell you that runner service is, is, has to be done in two hours. Runner service is basically, if the alarm goes off, the alarm company has to send a responder within two hours to reset the alarm. Our fire company resets the alarm because we want it to go off again when we leave. So we, we are waiving runner service. But for that two hour, there are 43 listed fire alarm company providers within two hours of Pottstown. So it's not like we're, we're, we have a very small pool. And these are some very large companies as well as some very small companies, you know, two or three-man operations. So it's not that difficult to get listed, it's just a process that they're going to meet the intent of the code. So our sprinkler systems give us our early suppression. It's like having a firefighter sitting in the building 24 hours a day. So currently, if you have a B use occupancy or a business, sprinklers are only required if you put 30 or more people 55 feet in the air. All right? What we want to do is, we, we want to say that if the fire area is 24,000 square feet or the total building exceeds 48,000 square feet, or the height of the building exceeds 30 feet above the fire department access, which is the ground floor, you have to put a sprinkler in it. All right? And again, we want to change from 12,000 to 10,000. Just some notes regarding sprinklers. Lower Potts Grove, um, if your building is 5,000 square feet, you have to sprinkler it, plus they also make you sprinkler the homes because they had amendment to the ordinances, um, prior to when the state adopted a uniform construction code. Upper Marion is 3,000 square feet, City of Rattling is already at 10,000 square feet. So this isn't something new, it's just that we're trying to protect our infrastructure here. So the idea of this is it's going to provide stronger fire alarm installation requirements, stronger, uh, requirements for sprinkler installations. And this, again, this is only going to impact new construction or change of use. This isn't going to change the business that's been here for 30 years. So, any questions?
Yeah, have you talked to, um, Peggy Lee Clark about this, uh, the whole sprinklers for business thing? And I, and I hear you saying it's only impacting somebody with change of use, but I, I think that, I just want to make sure that you're in communication with her.
I have spoken and I have provided Ms. Clark with, um, uh, some information that President Trump did sign into law this year, a tax reduction for sprinkler systems. He has changed it that now the entire cost of the sprinkler system can now be a tax deduction until it's completely paid off. So there, it's not designed to inhibit growth, thanks to the tax break, that it, they can now claim that as a cost and, and get that, the entire cost, before they were only allowed
Any other questions? Okay, we'll list this for action Monday evening. And while you're here, tell us about your volunteer fire, fire recruitment incentive program.
So, every month you hear about the fire department. They come here and they tell you that they're involved in training and, you know, they're, they're doing their fundraising. They're doing a great job. I, I really couldn't be any more prouder. A couple of them are here tonight, I was hoping that one of them was still going to be here, but he must've had a call on the ambulance. But the intent here is, I want to take our fire department and I want to make it stronger, I want to make it better. All right? My intent is not to turn around and take this into a fully paid fire department, we can't afford a fully paid fire department. So I'm trying to embrace our current volunteers and hopefully recruit some others. So a little bit of a background about the fire department, uh, we are a volunteer fire department. The fire companies, not the borough, hires the four drivers. They have, uh, a, we have four firefighters working 24/7, 365, they work three, three shifts. Their shifts are 24 hours on and they're 48 hours off. The career firefighters provide for the first five minutes of fire protection because they're there. They're already in the station. And the volunteers have to make up the remaining 90%. You're going to keep hearing, in, in 1960, Pennsylvania had over 300,000 volunteers and now we're down to 50,000. While that may be true that the numbers are at 50,000, nationwide, we're about 20,000 volunteers up nationwide. We still have over 820,000 volunteers across the country. Our firefighters respond to more than just fires. I mean, when you call, we're getting called 911 because I don't know how to shut my water off in my building because it's leaking. Those are the things that we go to. And wires down, down trees, the hazardous materials, the quintessential cat in a tree, truly any incident that doesn't fall under the police, we get called for. We even get called for public works and we arrive and say, "No, I'm sorry, this is a public works issue." But we get calls for those. To match our current services, to make it a, a fully paid fire department, would cost 6.5 million dollars. We don't have 6.5 million dollars, my current budget is only 1.7. So the volunteers are saving us over 4 million dollars. Our current total firefighting force is 95 firefighters. So we're not short on volunteers. All right? That includes the 12 firefighters, the 12 paid firefighters and myself. All right? So I have 82 volunteer firefighters. You're going to hear other companies or other municipalities are telling you, "I got 12." We're not that unfortunate. In 2017, we responded to 963 calls for 911 service. The most active volunteer firefighter in the fire department responded to less than 250 calls, or 25% of our overall calls. Our most active and reliable group of volunteers consists of about 20 members and they consistently respond to about 150 calls. Most volunteers respond to 50 or less. So I don't have a lack of volunteer problem, I have a lack of participation. Um, part of this is, uh, there's, they work two, three jobs, they have to balance their home life. The commitments to the fire company, just to become a fire, certified as a firefighter is 178 hours of training before I can let you go through the front door of the house that's on fire. All right? There's apparatus maintenance, there's fundraising, in addition to all the emergency responses. So there's a lot to being a volunteer. Pennsylvania created Act 172, provides tax relief to active volunteers. We can either do a real estate tax or NEIT. It is my belief that council enacted a real estate, uh, looked to pursue a real estate break for that. This, this tax break does not include property tax for school, volunteers who do not own real property, and non-residents. So I do have several volunteers that do not live in the Pottstown borough, but do volunteer here. They would be ineligible to apply for Act 172, even if they own their own home. So 172 will not work here in Pottstown. Um, if we were to implement Act 172, it would have a, uh, an impact to the budget, it would of about $17,000 and we'd be providing $923 annual savings to 16 volunteers who own real property in the borough. Of those 16, in 2017, six of them responded to calls and they responded to less than 2%. So to create a, a threshold in which they'd have to meet the number of calls, even if it was at 25%, we're not even close to making it. So, my proposed solution is I want to implement a volunteer incentive program. The volunteer incentive program is going to be a points-based system. And at the end of the year, the points turn into a dollar. All right? There is a cap at 550 points and you have to earn 100 points in order to qualify. So how do you earn points? To qualify for points, you have to respond to a 911 call, that gets you one point. If you live in the borough and are a volunteer and you respond to a call, I'm going to give you an extra half a point. So I'm rewarding our volunteers that already live here. I have about 35 volunteers who live in the borough, but again, only 16 of them own real property. If they are certified as a firefighter too, which is the highest level of certification that you can get as a firefighter outside of the that you can get as a firefighter outside of the officer certifications, I'm going to give you an extra half a point because the higher they're trained, the more safer they're going to be. All right? So, and if you attend our fire company drills, I'll give you a half a point. You attend fire department training is a half a point. You attend a training that results in a certification, again, I want to reward training. I'm going to give you a full point. If you participate in fire company fundraising, I'm going to give you a full point. So I'm trying to get participation by rewarding them with points. So if we were to implement this, out of the 82 volunteers, if they maxed out, would have an impact of $45,000 to the budget. It would cost us $45,000. Clearly, we're not going to max that out. My expected impact is hopefully going to be around 10,000, 15,000. But again, because most of our volunteers respond to less than 100 calls, I'm trying to get them up to 100 calls, which is going to improve our responses. Right now, I'm averaging about three volunteers on a call outside of a structure fire. If it's a structure fire, I get about 20 volunteers, 20 to 30 volunteers. So they're actually coming out when there's a fire. Okay? But when we get called for a fire alarm, we respond with the assumption that it's actually a fire. So, and when we get the fire alarms, I'm getting three or four volunteers, plus the four paid guys and myself. So we're at eight or nine. Okay? So the desired impact is it's going to increase all the responses from the volunteers. All right? We're going to reward the volunteers who reside in the borough. We're going to reward those volunteers who seek or hold higher certification. We're going to increase participation in drills and training and our fundraising. Those that would not qualify are our career firefighters. The firefighters that are already employed by the fire companies, they can't earn any points. They're already being paid to be here. When a volunteer or a, when one of the career firefighters is on vacation and none of the other full-timers take it, they do take a volunteer and put him in the seat and pay him. When he's working in that capacity, he wouldn't be able to, allowed to earn points. So the idea here is I'm truly focusing on the volunteers here to improve their responses and participation. Any questions?
Who's keeping track of all this?
I'm keeping track. In August of last year, we really started tracking the number of volunteers and members that respond. Prior to that, they were just tracking man-hours. And man-hours doesn't tell me anything because if the call lasts five minutes and I have 60 people, I mean, you can, you can do the math, but when I have a fire, a fire can last 10 minutes. It could last, you know, 10 hours. So the man-hours doesn't really account for much as to, it does for the, the actual participation. And I have been tracking it since August. I have real-time data from the officers when they input a call. In fact, to date, we have responded to 336 calls as of yesterday in the borough. I have nine volunteers who have responded to greater than 40 calls for the year. I have one volunteer, my most active volunteer right now, he has responded to 119 calls. So he's at 35%. I have four that have hit the 40 mark and three that have hit the 60 mark. So this is designed to hopefully improve those. Most of those that are not listed here have responded to less than 20. So I have volunteers. I'm just trying to improve their participation.
You know, and I think my concern is funneling tax dollars to people who don't reside in the borough. Because as I understand it, if I live, if I live, and I get it, we have volunteers from all over, trust me, but as a taxpayer, that really pisses me off that I'm going to, and I realize that we could be paying a lot more money if we had a paid fire department. Trust me, I get it. But when people here are struggling, they don't want to see their money going outside of the borough. And that's just a comment. I'm not looking for, for an answer to it. I'm just telling you as a resident how I feel.
Okay. I have a rebuttal. That volunteer that doesn't live in the borough is actually providing a service to the borough. And that's what we're trying to reward them for, is providing that service to the borough. And we will be pursuing grants to hopefully offset any of this as well, but, you know, in absence of grants, it would have to come out of the fire fund.
Which we're already struggling in, correct, Janice? Fire fund is not doing well at present? Sorry, never mind. From what I understand, the fire, what we've tapped into all the reserves we can in the fire fund?
That's correct.
Okay. All right.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, we'll list it for action.
Does the amount of firefighters within a borough impact any kind of the insurances or anything like that?
The national average for volunteer fire department is, comes from NFPA 1920. It says that we have to have 15 firefighters on location within nine minutes of a, of a building fire. We're hitting that more than 50% of the time. The number of firefighters, I do not believe is going to actually impact our ISO rating, but it does definitely reduce our losses. The more firefighters I have, the lower our losses are going to be.
And the last presentation you made, it just came to me, does that, with you cutting the square footage down for the amount of sprinklers, sprinkler systems, does that impact the, their insurances or the borough at all?
It does. It, the, if the building is sprinkled and it has a fire alarm, it is my understanding that most, if not all, insurance companies do offer a discount on their insurance. It does help with our ISO rating because we do have the water system to support it.
Okay. So for Monday, we'll ask you for a motion to move forward on this, writing the ordinance and getting ready.
Thank you.
Okay. Nineteen, Parking Regulations Amendment.
So this, this item is actually going to be pulled from the agenda and postponed until next month. We wanted to look at the parking, the parking rates, but after further examination, we've actually already adopted the 50 cents per hour parking rate as part of our fee schedule, which by ordinance, we're permitted to update the fees in this manner. So if you recall, this is all kind of a part of the rollout with Park Mobile. We're working through an agreement with them right now. We still are on track, hopefully, to, to roll out the new parking payment option this summer, but we need a little more time to coordinate with them and come back to you next month with a more cohesive parking proposal overall.
Okay. Thank you. That puts us at, comments from citizens present? Twenty is Civil Service Commission Appointment.
Yes, we, we have one vacancy on there and we have one person apply for that. Mark Gibson has, has applied for that. We've also received a resignation letter from Mark Gibson from the Blighted Property Committee. As it turns out, it would be a conflict for him to serve both committees, so he has decided to move on from blighted and pursue the Civil Service Commission.
Okay. And the commission is a promotionalist? Twenty-one?
I don't have the promotionalist.
No?
Chief, did you want to talk about the promotionalist at all?
Yes.
Okay. Please do.
Sorry.
You knew that, didn't you? Okay. Let me get back to the meeting.
As, as the pending possible promotion of Deputy Chief, that will create a opening for a sergeant and a patrol, I mean, a corporal. As per the rules of civil, of the, of our contract is we have 90 days to initiate the process, to begin, to begin the process of the promotion. So I'm looking for council to agree to begin that process. I've already met with Civil Service Commission and I, I made them aware that council may decide this Monday night, I, I'm recommending that you go ahead with the process. You can then later on recommend, I mean, this is just to start the process. This really end up being your decision when you're, when you're prepared to promote.
Referring to testing process, chief? Is that what you're talking? Okay.
The testing process for, which is a written examination and oral interview.
So what we need to do is move to?
Move to authorize the Civil Service Commission to undergo the initial testing process for, is it corporal and sergeant, chief?
You said both.
Okay. Thanks.
All right. So we'll take this on Monday evening. Twenty-two, Padita.
Two vacant terms. Anything on that?
So we were just made aware of the vacancy in Padita and per our policy, we'll advertise this for 30 days and hopefully look for some applicants in June.
Yes. I mean, I have two possibilities that I'm in conversation with, but that doesn't mean more to me.
Sure.
Forward, but to the south.
Okay. Thank you. We'll look for that in June.
Okay. And now, comments from our citizens.
Okay. Tori Dugan.
Hi, my name is Tori Dugan. I am a 2015 graduate of Pottstown High School and as part of my senior project while in the high school, I decided to start a 5K. So I am the race director of the Padita Run to the Farm 5K. This year, it's being held on June 28, 2018 at 6:30 at Riverfront Park. Part of this also allowed me to recruit a current high schooler to add on to this project as her senior project. So I have Hannah Shankle working with me in order to gain local and countywide support with her connections through the running community as well. I'm a varsity cross-country and track runner at Siskiyou University where I just completed my junior year of college. And I would like to thank some of my sponsors here tonight of Tower Health, the Health and Wellness Foundation, Downtown Designs, who have done all the logos and posters, and Laser Works for their medals, as well as Wolf Baldwin and Associates. Last year, we had a total of 53 runners coming all the way from Morgantown to Philadelphia. There was a vast majority and a lot of people, positive reviews of that. So that was really exciting and continued to grow for my first year, which had about We are excited for, all ages are welcome, and we are excited for more runners to come out this year. There will be a monetary prize as well as medals, a T-shirt, and a beer garden for anyone who's 21 and older. You can register at pretzelcitysports.com/padita. Any questions?
Okay. Cheryl Miller.
I'm here tonight to address two concerns that I have. One, land banking appointments. I was pleased to see Madison Morton's letter of interest to serve on the land banking committee. Attached to the council agenda, I was equally disappointed to see it pulled. Madison is representative of the heart of the Pottstown community. He's intelligent, passionate, and there is no question about his honor and integrity or desire to be, want to be involved in the community. You ask to see new faces to serve on boards, commissions, and committees, but the same people continue to be regurgitated over and over again. Council has the opportunity to do the right thing, and I hope that you choose to do so. My second area of concern is cameras. It's my understanding that the Hill School has proposed purchasing seven cameras to be added to the borough's citywide camera system, however, with a catch. Five cameras to be placed in the neighborhood around the Hill School and two to be placed in areas determined by law enforcement. The citywide camera system and police department is supported and paid for by the taxpayers. Anyone can make a contribution to the camera fund, however, they do not get to dictate the location of those cameras. Cameras are determined by need according to the crime stats and law enforcement. We're holding our own on Ninth Street, but our once quaint little number streets are surrounded by deterioration, blight, and crime. The three most violent crime incidences involving firearms occurred in wards three and two. And we don't need any more crime pushed our way. I have not just been here for a year or two. This is my hometown. I've been paying property taxes on my owner-occupied residence for 28 years. Most of the people that live on my block also have been there for 10, 20, 30, 40, and some 50 years. This is our hometown and we are Pottstown, and we are frustrated. We're not asking for special consideration. What we're asking for is equal representation. Counsel, you are elected to represent the entire borough of Pottstown and your decisions must reflect that. We're currently in a political climate in which conflict of interest, cronyism, and pay-to-play is no longer acceptable. I gave up my vote on counsel, but I did not give up my voice. So two more things occurred tonight that I just want to touch on. I agree with Councilor Arms. It is absolutely ridiculous to close down an entire street to support the self-serving interest of one organization. I do like the taxpayer incentives for firefighters because it encourages people to purchase their homes in the borough of Pottstown, which was one of the reasons that, one of the reasons we were supporting that incentive in the first place. And I'd also like to congratulate Councilor Arms on his nuptials and to thank him very much because he had utilized every possible business and organization in the borough for his wedding, his reception, and even his newlywed furniture purchase. Thank you.
All right. Next, Ron Williams.
An event that took place this weekend that wasn't mentioned was the Fifth Annual Powwow on Manitani Creek. It was probably one of the best events we've had in, since we started this event. It was incredibly rain-free for the entire period of the Powwow. And I want to thank council, first of all, for their support for the Powwow. I want to thank the police department. You know, Corporal Long worked with us to, to get the logistics right on, on what we needed to do. Parks and Recreation Department has been extremely helpful and Mike Lenhart has been very personally involved in helping me to, with his advice on, on how to put some of this together. But I just wanted to come in and, and thank you. You know, we, we, this intertribal event that we, we put together brings folks from all over Pennsylvania, Delaware, New Jersey, New York. We have tribal community, representatives from tribal communities who bring their friends into Pottstown. And the fact that, when I first started this, my objective was to bring some awareness to, to our little community here and to share something of the culture, not only with this community, but with the region. We're bringing people in from all over. They're looking at Pottstown. And I hear really good comments from the folks that come in. We had a couple of families who came, who just happened to be visiting the United States, heard about the Powwow, contacted me about how to, where to make arrangements for, for hotels. I referred them to our local hotels, you know? So we're bringing people in here, maybe in a small way, but I just want to thank you.
Thank you.
Peggy Lee Clark.
Counselors, Mayor, I just wanted to, I am the Executive Director of Pottstown Area Industrial Development, and I did want to address the question of Councilor Arms. Although I appreciate the fact about that there is now a tax relief bill that they will get it, that developers will get some money back, I am concerned about change of use. I'm okay with the new construction, but there are already many, many costs to these buildings to bring them up to code. And I would hate to see people stymied because of the upfront costs of adding now a sprinkler system to them. So I do have some concerns. I do appreciate the fact that there is a tax- I do appreciate the fact that there is a, a tax relief at the end of the day, but that does not help with the front-loading of costs, and as many of you have heard me say, these buildings are beautiful on the outside, but many of them need lots of love on the inside, and lots of love translates to a lot of dollars. And there are people that are putting a lot of money in, but because of the hurdles, some of the hurdles we're creating for them, they are slow to get them open, and that is not revenue incentive. These people are putting their own funds in, and they are not big business, and they just don't have the deep pockets, and this could be, and have an adverse effect. So I would like you to take that into consideration. And the second thing that I would like you to take into consideration when you're looking at these certifications is I, I again appreciate the statistics that were offered. I don't know how many municipalities are in the United States, but to me, two hundred seems like a small number. I don't know whether it is or not. Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes all comments.
How about councilors' general discussion? Councilor Kirkland.
A friend of mine, Mike Howe and Lori Howe, they're, they are business owners from, from Phoenixville, and they are opening a business here in Pottstown. They are very interested in the, uh, opening, you know, more businesses in Pottstown, and this is their, I believe this is their first or second one. And they, but to have a little announcement, please join us Friday, May eleventh, from one to seven PM for the official opening of Light Mike's Salon and Wax Zen Bar. Our ribbon-cutting ceremony will be at three o'clock PM. Light Mike's is a salon, and thrilled to be part of Pottstown community, continues the tradition of operating grassroots business with full salon services. Um, let me see. Mike's is committed to providing excellent customer service by exceeding your expectations. They will be grilling hot dogs and serving snacks and cold drinks throughout the day. We invite you and your family and friends to come out and join us for a wonderful day of meeting and greeting the salon specialists. They give out coupons and discounts and things like that, so I encourage everyone to come and welcome Mike to Pottstown and, and enjoy a day of meeting, meeting new business.
Where's the address?
Uh, there's no address on here. But it's at the former location of, of the, formerly offered at Spatt and Slipper?
Charlotte and, and Chestnut.
Yeah. That, yeah, that, that location, they're taking over, that location.
Okay. Good.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilor Pias. Councilor Arms.
Can you come back? Sure.
Councilor Praskel.
Like the mayor said, the Rock the Block event went well. Rebuilt a fence with Matt Green from Glock of Real Estate, Richard Bradbury from the DA's office was there, and, you know, Brian Marquette and our guys from the borough did a good job cleaning up, so it was a real mess. So we got through it. Congratulations, Dennis.
Councilor Leveninski. And Councilor Culp.
Congratulations to Dennis.
Mayor?
I forgot to add that I think two weeks ago was the Farmer's Market Soft Grand Opening. If you haven't been, it's in the Farmer's Market Building. Adam has opened up spectacular business, and he also has hydroponic growing downstairs, and he's working with the Montgomery County Community College Program that does, I think, just solely hydroponics, so they've been working together. He's been teaching the students how to do hydroponic growing. It's a wonderful use of a building that's already been there and already has Farmer's Market on it, so feel free to stop in there. I think they're open Thursday, Friday, Saturday until seven PM. Sunday, too. Thanks. Oh, and I'm sorry, one more thing. Unfortunately, I will not be here next committee of the whole meeting. I will be in California for graduation, but if you'd like, I will send you my mayor report for you, Jerry.
Appreciate that. Councilor Arms?
Sure. Let's start with the good news. So I just want to thank the local businesses. The quality and the prices, I mean, you really couldn't beat. Just off of High Street, Downtown Designs, Complete Graphics, Beverly's, Agnes Edmonds and White's and Corn's, The Ice House, Lords and Ladies, Three Rosebuds Floral, Brookside Country Club, Words of Art by Ally J, and the Carousel at Pottstown, you know, all did a really nice job making sure that my wife didn't freak out the day of the wedding. And then on to the bad news, I guess for some people. I've lived in Pottstown my entire life, and imagine living, working, and retiring in this borough. I started my term in two thousand and sixteen under the impression I might be able to make a difference in my hometown. Unfortunately, the last two years have been more than frustrating. On numerous occasions, I've had someone on council ask me what we are voting on the night of the vote, admit they don't understand the financial reports, and as a council, vote on items without seeking the information necessary to make a decision. I want to thank the residents of Pottstown, especially those in Ward Four, for trusting and making the right decisions. I hope that our local media, most importantly, residents, hold their local government accountable for their actions. Please accept this letter as my resignation as counselor, Ward Four, for the borough of Pottstown, as well as all of the committees and commissions I have been appointed to effective this evening, as I will be moving out of the borough. Thank you.
As for me, I do have to put out a thank you to the Montgomery County Commissioners. They were here last Tuesday evening for their annual town hall meeting. Some of the facts they put forward to us, in Montgomery County, the unemployment rate is down. The median income is up, and a lot of that has to do with Montgomery County Works, a program they've established. Locally, the West Campus enrollment has increased by sixty percent over the last five years. And since the year two thousand, the county has granted Pottstown over three million dollars in revitalization funds. And lastly, I can't forget to mention, as you did earlier, they did say that the work going to Keim Street Bridge would begin in two thousand and twenty. So we, we thank the three councillors for coming out and keeping us posted. Look forward to talking with them again next year. Actually, maybe next week. Okay. That's it for our meeting. There will be an executive session. We'll be discussing personnel and will not be returning. Waiting and adjourned.